Hi, my name is Erin Terroski and I want to be your Ward 1 councillor. Hola, me llamo Erin Terroski y quiero ser su consejala del Distrito Uno. I’ve lived in Salem for nearly 10 years, serving hundreds of people as your family veterinarian. We’ve listened to each other, we’ve solved problems together, we’ve made difficult final decisions, and we’ve shared joyous new beginnings. Now, we’re getting ready to start a new chapter, and on November 4th, I’m asking you to continue to work with me in a different type of office: Salem City Hall. Together, we can make our coastline stronger, our city more sustainable, our lives more affordable, our streets safer, and our home a better place to live, whether you’ve lived here your whole life, or you’re getting ready for your first October here. Ward 1 is a vibrant, beautiful place to live: it’s the Point, the Willows, and everything in between. We have such a wide variety of people and places in our ward, and this makes us unique and special. It can also make it difficult to find someone who can represent our diverse resident population and communicate with people who have lots of different things to say. I don’t have all of the answers, but one of the great things about being a veterinarian is having the opportunity to work with people from all walks of life, who are each navigating their own problems, and who might not even speak English. I’m willing to listen to everyone, and I’m working to improve my own communication skills by practicing Spanish every day. So soy la candidata única en Distrito Uno que tiene un sitio bilingüe, and I’ve made a point to offer a bilingual website and literature since starting my campaign in March. Y yo puedo hablar en francés aussi. I’m out in the Point and in the rest of our community every single day, and I want to make sure I’m ready to hear what you need to say, no matter how you need to say it. Salem is a well-loved hometown for people with deep local roots and rich family histories, but we’re also a safe haven for people who feel like this is the only place they can go. Together, we’ve built a community that welcomes people from every race and nationality, every gender and sexual orientation, every occupation, and every size and shape of family you can imagine. We are all neighbors, and I promise to work with you to keep our community intact, regardless of whatever outside forces are trying to separate us. I haven’t lived in Salem for my whole life, but the relationships I’ve made with my friends and neighbors since moving here in 2016 have turned this into the city that I call home. For all of the great things about Ward 1, we have our share of challenges too. We have the longest coastline of any of Salem’s wards, and our residents and businesses are continually facing flooding, storm surges, and other conflicts with our powerful ocean. My own basement, like many of yours, has a water line that seems to creep a little higher every year. We need to make some important decisions about how to protect our homes from water inundation, whether it’s fortifying seawalls, making smart choices about waste and energy in our daily lives, or advocating for the future of Shetland Park and our offshore wind marshaling site. Two national organizations have endorsed my campaign, recognizing my commitment to climate resilience and evidence-based science. My bachelor’s degree in biological engineering means that I can look at infrastructure and environmental problems objectively, with a strong basis and critical thinking. As a frequent scuba diver and longtime volunteer at the New England Aquarium, I’m one of the most environmentally conscious candidates running in this election cycle, and I want to put this knowledge to use for you to make our ward stronger in the face of flooding and rising seas. We also have a growing problem with housing affordability and the rising costs of life. We have a high demand for rental properties and housing units of all sizes, and not everyone wants to live in or own a large, single-family home with two cars parked in the driveway. I want to make sure that we continue to provide housing choices for people who choose to make Salem their home, and that means diversifying our housing stock to include homes of all sizes and price points. It means protecting our rental tenants, who make up 50% of the residents of Salem, from displacement and housing insecurity, so people who rent can feel empowered to remain invested in our community. It also means providing options for residents who want to downsize their homes, so people who have put down roots here can afford to keep them in place. It means building neighborhoods with character and charm, and maybe a nice little corner grocery store and a restaurant, so people don’t have to drive across town to get out and have a little bit of fun. By making our neighborhoods a priority, I want to keep our residents sheltered and provide places where people who are seeking a home can find one in Salem. While we’re talking about the cost of living, let’s talk about the cost of transportation. If you can reduce your reliance on a car, then you might be surprised by the changes you can make if you walk, ride a bike, or use a scooter to get around Salem. You can save money, you can improve your health and fitness, and you can absolutely reduce our city’s carbon footprint. I’ve spent several years working on our Transportation Commission and SWAG, Salem’s Safe Walking Advocacy Group, trying to make it safer and more efficient to people to move around our city, no matter how you choose to navigate Salem’s streets. If I’m elected as councillor, I want to continue this work in transportation equity in our ward and across Salem. Finally, I want to speak to the small business owners of Salem: my neighbors who own and operate restaurants, museums, bodegas, coffee shops, gift shops, breweries, salons, photography studios, bed and breakfasts, and other businesses. As a veterinarian who has spent six years in clinic leadership, I appreciate how hard it can be to depend on the success of your business to pay your bills. Much of the reason people visit Salem is because of our rich, small-business environment, and I want to be the type of city councillor who can support your small businesses whenever and however possible. I also want to make sure we keep sufficient variety in our commercial landscape to support the daily needs of our residents, giving you places to buy clothing, groceries, and other essentials, ideally within walking distances of your homes. Small businesses are the heart of Salem’s economy, and I want to keep that heart healthy and strong. There’s a lot of uncertainty at the national level in our country nowadays, but I want to lay Ward 1 into a stable, sustainable, and successful future. It’s not going to be an easy task, but I’m used to hard work, and I’m ready for the challenge. I hope to earn your trust, your respect, and your vote in the general election on November 4th. Me llamo Erin Terroski y estoy feliz por ver a donde queremos ir y cómo llegar juntos. I’m Erin Terroski, and I’m excited to see where we want to go and how to get there together. Thank you.
Hi, I’m Andrew Smith, and I’m running for Ward 2 City Councillor here in Salem. I want to just quickly thank SATV, the folks here, for giving me this opportunity to speak to you today, and also want to thank you, the voters, who came out for the preliminary election a couple of weeks ago and had the faith in me to put me through to this general election round. And so now, I’m asking for your vote on November 4th, as we head into that. You know, I’ve lived all over the North Shore, I’ve lived all over this country and other parts of the world, and my wife and I chose Salem to raise our kids because it is this welcoming, compassionate, and empathetic city. It’s got such a rich history and a very, very unique culture. I believe that Salem, right now, is on the right track into the future, and I want to keep us that way while adding some creative ideas of my own. I want us to have a stronger city well into the future, for my kids and your kids and your children’s children, and for you. A little bit about me: in my day job, I work as a professor, also an actor and a writer, so I come from a creative background, but also a background that’s always learning, always looking for new information, and willing to take that in and then apply it to what I do. A great actors, the great actors always listen and then they react. They have to listen and react, and I think that listening is one of the biggest components to being a ward councillor. You have to be accountable, you have to be attentive, and you have to be available, and I’m gonna do just those things for you. You know, I’ve been walking around, I’ve been chatting with a lot of folks at their doors or at different events, and I’ve noticed something that, while we may all have different opinions on how to progress this city forward, we all generally have the same goals for Salem, and I’ve been organizing those goals into the idea of asking Salem to grow stronger together. So what I mean by growth, and this is great if you want to lower your taxes by having a bigger tax base, or you want your kids to be able to afford to live here, or you yourself want to be able to continue to afford to live here. Growth is important, it does all of that. And I’m not just talking about housing, although housing is a key component of that element. And I think with, in terms of housing, we could make sure that we’re retrofitting older buildings, that are already there, that are existing, that can just fit well in with our city, but it’s also partnering with local landlords and folks like the North Shore CDC that don’t send rent out of our community, but instead serve the folks that are living here. We need more housing that fits what Salem needs. The easiest way to say it is, we need more senior housing, we need more deeply affordable housing, and we need more housing for young families so they can continue to move here. And how do we do that? By building more housing, and that’s why I’ve been endorsed by Abundant Housing Massachusetts. I’m very proud of that endorsement, and I want to make sure that we’re building things that Salem actually needs, that serve the current residents here as well as the future residents. That is deeply, deeply important to me. I also think that we need to have more permanent supportive housing, and that’s why I’ve been gone on record to support the Life Bridge Harbor Light Project, big hot-button issue in the ward. And it may get passed long before anybody, the next council even gets elected. However, I think it’s important, and it shows you where my values are at. Harbor Light Homes will provide keys, it gives homes for the previously homeless, it allows them to work and have a place to lay their head. The Life Bridge is going to actually shrink their number of beds while offering more day services and better living conditions, to allow people to have some dignity and to hopefully get out of homelessness. We all have that same goal: it’s to have homeless folks off our streets. I just think that I have a solid plan to do that. I also think we can work with the other cities and towns around us and make sure that Salem is a leader on this. We have to show them how it’s done, so that they can go ahead and do the same. Now, in terms of, in terms of building and growing, I also think it’s important that we make sure that we support our new high school project. You’ve heard a lot of numbers probably thrown around about that, about the new high school, the numbers actually just came down the other day, and the new estimates would have it pegged at under $200 million, and over 30 years, it translates to just over $100 a person. That’s it: to build a high school well into the future that serves our students. It’s incredibly important. It makes our city stronger. In terms of strength, our city is only as strong as our workers of today and our children of the future. Now, we have great-rated elementary schools, we have a middle school at Collins that’s had a wonderful luck lately with a more flexible curriculum, our high school AP score passing rate has doubled. We need that high school. We need to make sure that there’s a great place for our students to learn, that they can actually learn something in, and it’s right-sized for them, and so I’ve been supporting that project. I also think it’s important that we use union labor on that project. And I’ve been endorsed by the North Shore Labor Council, as well as SEIU 509, because of my commitment to using, to strengthening workers’ rights and strengthening how much money workers are bringing into our city, because if our workers are paid well, our city is going to thrive. I also think that we can, we can grow stronger by looking at our zoning codes, by having more businesses that serve the residents right in where they live, so that people aren’t driving places, they’re walking places instead, and that we have a thriving, active business community for things that we actually want and need. And finally, in terms of stronger, I think that, I want to speak to climate resiliency. Now, we’re one of the 19 climate leader communities, I’m very proud of that. We’ve adopted the Specialized Energy Code, which means we’re electrifying buildings, we’re using heat pumps, solar panels, we need to do that more for our municipal buildings, including the new high school, big savings when we do those kind of things. But we also need to reinvest the money that comes with being a climate leader community into things like seawalls and climate mitigation strategies for rising tides in Collins Cove, for example, and I want to make sure that we do that. I want to talk a little bit about our economy here as well. Tourism is everywhere. Walk out that door, it’s October, folks, it is here. Some numbers get thrown around sometimes, we only make $80,000 on all that tourism? Can’t be right? Well, it’s not right. Tourism is a $140 million economic driver for our city, we have to embrace that, we have to use that, but we also have to make sure that it is serving our residents and is not displacing people or causing them to want to leave. There’s a lot of money flowing into our community from tourism. We have to make sure that our residents see that, understand that, and get to actually use and benefit from the tourism, rather than be harmed by it. And that goes to togetherness. Sometimes messages and numbers and things get thrown out there because the city may have a bit of a communication problem. And when there’s a vacuum of communication, it can get filled with misinformation or the loudest voices. I want to make sure that I’m doing town halls, so that I’m hearing you folks in Ward 2, coffee drop-in hours, so that I’m hearing you, listening to you, but I also want to do a newsletter, video content, so that you are hearing from the city what you need to know, because I do not want some of those loudest voices drowning folks out and questioning their values. I walk around, I talk to a lot of people, doors, at events, and I hear a lot, I often hear the same thing: you know, “I want such and such, but my neighbor doesn’t.” “Well, I want this, but my neighbors won’t tell you that.” And then you go to the neighbors, and they tell you the same thing. Talk to your neighbors, talk to people, because chances are, some of the voices in this city are making you question what you believe, and it’s time to stand up for those beliefs, and I want to stand up and I want to be your voice to stand up for those beliefs. But I don’t work for any one particular person or any one particular group, and I’ve made a commitment, as the first candidate I can find anywhere to do something like this, I will not take any donation over $29, that’s the average hourly wage in Salem. $29, it’s a low number. People said I was nuts to do it. But I’ll tell you this: I was able to outraise other folks, I was able to move through preliminary with just those small-dollar donations pooled, and I’m gonna do that again, all the way through to the general, you can rest assured, because no matter how much money somebody has, they always will have their voice, and I want to make sure I amplify that. Yeah, I had my first job in Salem: a floating restaurant called The Rockmore, some of you may remember that way back. I’ve worked in restaurants, I’ve worked in tourism, in education, and in creative fields, these are all fields that are particularly important to Salem. Now, I want to go to work for Salem, and I want to go to work for you. So I’m asking you to please elect me on November 4th to be your Ward 2 City Councillor, and if you need more information, go to www.AndrewWorksForSalem.com, that’s www.AndrewWorksTheNumber4Salem.com today. Now, let’s get to work. Thank you.
Hi, I’m Jason Sadoriak, and I’m running to represent Salem’s Ward 3. The election is going to be November 4th, and if you live in Ward 3, you can vote at Salem High School’s auditorium. Before I begin, I want to thank Salem Access Television for the opportunity to be able to speak with you, and for allowing other candidates to do that as well. Now, I’m running because public service is core to who I am. I started my career in public service in the US Marine Corps Infantry, and I volunteered across the country. I’ve been inspired to do that because, growing up, I lived in an impoverished community, and I watched my mother struggle as she raised my siblings and I on a cashier’s wage, and I watched other people around me struggle as well. I want to be able to help people like that out, especially here in Salem. After leaving the United States Marine Corps, I pursued an education in economics and political science, as well as masters in public administration. I want to take that knowledge and expertise and apply it here to helping our neighbors out. Originally moved here in Salem in 2016, on Halloween weekend no less, and despite the traffic and the crowds, I wasn’t scared away, I just instantly fell in love with the place. But, there still remains to be challenges that our neighbors are facing here, in particular with affordability. I want to be able to tackle challenges that are making it difficult to live here in Salem, and want to help enhance the quality of life here. But most importantly, I want to have open communication with you and our neighbors in the ward. I’m first and foremost, and the primary responsibility of a ward councillor, is being your advocate and having that open communication. So, I’m gonna create those opportunities, and if, when I go to the city to navigate that bureaucracy on your behalf, and the answer is, they don’t know, or they can’t fix your problem, I will come to you, because I respect your time and your priorities, because that’s what it means to be a community, that we actually talk to one another. So, first and foremost, I want to be your advocate, I want to create opportunities like a newsletter, or just be open to little town halls, to be able to hear your problems, so that when you have an issue with a pothole or a pipe burst, I will move as quickly as possible to help you out. You deserve that. I also want to tackle the affordability issue here. Now, I won’t say that I have a silver bullet, but I do have an expertise in economic development, and I want to apply that here in Salem. My background is actually in land use and transportation, and so I want to work with the city to find ways to make it easier for everyone to live here, no matter your income, because I know that a simple mistake or just some bad luck can really knock you down. And so, first thing I want to help tackle is the housing crisis here. I want to be able to sustain the prices that are making it difficult to afford to live here, whether that’s through taxes or being a renter. And I want to make this place, this wonderful place, for others who want to call it a home to be able to do so. And I want to be able to work on the decaying, old transportation system that we have here: the roads, the transit system. I want to be able to make it more efficient, but also safe, so when people are walking around, they don’t have to worry about being harmed. But we also want to make sure we can get to the places that we enjoy, or where we work, efficiently. And so, that is my sort of platform: affordability, better quality of life, and ultimately, my North Star is just to help people. If you need help, I want you to be able to come to me. That’s the role of government: to create an environment that everyone can thrive in, to lift you up, something for you to bounce off of, and not hold you back. And so, this November, please vote, I hope you would consider me for that vote, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out, even before the election. Thank you.
My name is Emmylou Manwell, and I’m running for Ward 4 City Councillor, to make our streets, sidewalks, and intersections safer, strengthen our public schools so that every child has a future in college or a career in the trades, and to ensure that City Hall listens and responds to the needs of Ward 4 residents. My fiance and I often discuss how moving to Salem was one of the best decisions we ever made. We looked at several different cities and towns, but quickly fell in love with everything that Salem has to offer: sprawling ocean views, thriving downtown full of businesses and shops, and a rich history that brings people from all over the world. Though we do often joke that we would not make the decision to move into Salem during Halloween week, that was quite an experience. In my professional life, I am a senior attorney at Metro West Legal Services, where I represent domestic violence and human trafficking survivors, as well as Afghan refugees who fought alongside US soldiers during the war against the Taliban. That work has taught me how to listen, empathize, prepare, and fight, and that’s what I’ll bring to the ward as a city councillor in City Hall. You deserve a city councillor who is equally focused on the big issues facing our city, as well as delivering excellent constituent services. When your road isn’t plowed, or your trash isn’t picked up, I want to be the first person you call, but more importantly, I want to be the one that addresses your needs. When I campaign door-to-door, one issue comes up again and again, and that is safety. I’ll support continued and increased investment in Ward 4 infrastructure to make our streets safer for drivers, cyclists, pedestrians, and especially children. Folks on Ravenna Ave have told me that they worry about tractor trailers flying through red lights. Folks on Valley Street have told me that they had to fight for many months to get a no-left turn signal installed in a place that was actually visible. And folks who regularly walk down Highland Ave have told me that nearly every time they’re walking, they have a near miss with cars cutting through on Proctor Street. Ward 4 also has two of Salem’s most dangerous school bus stops. Parents should worry about grades, not safety. That’s why I’ll push for more traffic enforcement and infrastructure improvements that protect our families. I’ll advocate for automated enforcement of speeding in school zones, in addition to things like continued funding for the stop-arm cameras on the school buses that have been catching violators, and clear lane markings and raised crosswalks with beacon lights, so that pedestrians are visible to drivers when they’re crossing the street. As a product of public education myself, I’m proud to support the new Salem High School, that will deliver to our students modern classrooms, an expanded vocational education and arts programming. But great schools are nothing without passionate teachers, so I’ll also partner with the school committee to make sure that teachers and paraprofessionals have the resources they need to deliver the education our students deserve. And I’ll also make sure that their voices are heard when decisions are being made about education. Finally, I’ll support smart development that meets the needs of Salem residents, and especially Ward 4 residents. The last decade’s growth has been great for local businesses, especially in downtown, but it’s pricing out too many people. Young professionals like teachers and nurses are facing soaring rents, and seniors are burdened with skyrocketing property taxes. We need more starter homes and senior housing, not just luxury condos to be built. But most importantly, we need a strong voice for neighborhoods through every step of development, and that’s what I’ll provide as Ward 4 City Councillor. Please reach out to me with questions, either to my cellphone, which is 617-297-7856, or on my website, which is emmylouward4.com, that’s a number four dot com. It would be an honor to serve as your city councillor and be the voice for Ward 4 in Salem City Hall.
Hello, my name is Zach Hallidron, and I am running for City Council in Ward 5, because I believe local government should be accessible, responsive, and above all, accountable to the people it serves. For me, that starts with one core priority: constituent services. When faith in public institutions and their representatives is low, as it is now, it is easy for presidents to feel like government is something that happens to them, rather than something they have a say in. At the local level, the number-one way we can work to remedy that is with constituent services. It’s how, it’s how we make sure your voice doesn’t just get heard, it gets answered. It’s the phone calls returned, it’s the email follow-ups, it’s the potholes reported and actually filled, it’s the housing application that you can’t figure out, and someone helping you navigate it without sending you in circles. It’s how local government meets you where you are, and does what it’s supposed to do: serve its residents. Elected officials oftentimes suffer from six-month syndrome. They are elected to serve you for a period of 24 months, and then you see them for six of those, namely, June to November preceding the following election. That won’t be the case for me. Responsive communication in the form of timely answers to urgent questions, proactive outreach in the form of joint town halls with our Ward 1 and Ward 7 city councillors in the Point End and South Salem neighborhoods, accessibility in the form of regular office hours, and up-to-date newsletter that presidents can use to learn, to learn more about what’s happening and where in real time, are all tools and methodologies that I intend to implement. Now, I realize that trusting somebody with a speech impediment to speak up for you is a big ask, but after my years in a big ask, but after my, my, my years in, in policy and legislation, first in Congress as a staffer on the House Armed Services Committee, and now with the Ipswich River Watershed Association as their advocacy program manager, I know what good government looks like and what it does not. For me, good government is, is, is rarely just about talking. We have enough talkers in government. Rather, it is about listening and then acting, and that is what I intend to do as a City Counselor. So I, so I respectfully ask for your vote on November 4th, and until then, I will see you around Ward Five.
Hello again. My name is Lydia King, and I'm running to represent Ward Five on the Salem City Council. Since the last time I had the opportunity to speak to you all through Salem Access TV, a couple of big things have happened in my life. I turned 30, I made it through our preliminary election, and this past weekend, I married my best friend. It's been a season of joy and reflection for me, and I've spent it doing what I love most, talking to our neighbors, knocking on doors, and working towards a better future for Salem. I want to start by saying thank you. In the preliminary election, I received 60% of the vote here in Ward Five, more votes than any other candidate in the city of Salem that night. I'm grateful for your trust, and I'm even more energized to continue earning your support through November and beyond. Our campaign has been growing every day because it's rooted in real conversations with working class people and real creative solutions. I'm proud to be endorsed by organizations that share my passion and vision for equity and progress, like the Massachusetts Nurses Association, Abundant Housing MA, the North Shore Labor Council, and many others. They know that when working families in Salem succeed, we all succeed. I always like to say that being a ward counselor is all about meeting people where they are and showing up when people need support. This is what I have done for years as a community organizer, knocking doors outside of election years and meeting people where they are to hear their feedback and elevate their voices. Right now, there are some big decisions happening in Salem. The redevelopment of Shetland Park, the South Salem train stop, and the proposal for a new high school are all projects that could shape the future of our city for decades to come. We need deep community input. This means going beyond a checkbox survey or a poorly advertised listening session. It means actively including families, renters, students, workers, and seniors in these conversations every step of the way. On contemporary issues, the issue I hear about the most at the doors is traffic safety. We need safer streets for pedestrians, bicycles, and cars. In Ward Five, we have far too many dangerous intersections and traffic-related injuries. We need traffic calming, bike and pedestrian-specific infrastructure, stronger enforcement of our existing traffic laws, and better public transit options. The other big issue people ask about is affordability. With over 40% of Salem households cost burden due to their housing costs, the housing crisis is a huge threat to the stability of our community. People are getting priced out of the city that they have called home for decades. We need bold, thoughtful action, including upzoning along transit lines, investments in deeply affordable housing, protections for tenants, especially our public housing tenants like our neighbors at Bertram and Pioneer Terrace, and clear pathways to homeownership. As a coastal community, Salem is on the front lines of the climate crisis. Sea levels are rising, and with major flooding already happening in Ward Five, we need to invest today in tomorrow's protections. We need to prioritize our funding for improved drainage systems, seawalls, and pumping stations to prepare for the next 50 years of sea levels rising. Finally, when I think about the future of Salem, my mind gravitates towards our children and our schools. Salem leads the way in gateway cities in MCAS scores with huge growth at all levels announced just this week. This progress is no accident. It's thanks to excellent school leadership and huge investments in student well-being, engaging coursework, fantastic educators, and lots more. We must continue this investment for years to come. Salem students deserve uninhibited access to safe, supportive learning environments. They also need excellent and well-built facilities, like a new Salem High School. This is critical for them continuing their learning journey through their most formative years. Diverse course offerings, like CTE programs, AP classes, great sports, music, and arts, as well as excellent extracurriculars, are central to a holistically rewarding education. From housing to safety to education, I believe Salem deserves leadership that meets people where they are, collaborates effectively, and focuses on action and creative solutions. If you envision a Salem where families can afford to live, work, and thrive, neighborhoods are walkable and safe for the long term, and our community's needs take priority, I would be honored to receive your vote this November. The general election is Tuesday, November 4th. To learn more about me, visit my website at lydiaforSalem.com. That's lydiafor, F-O-R, Salem, dot com. Thank you again for your support, and thank you for caring about the future of our city.